October 29th, Commission meeting. If you would stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a reminder to silence your cellphones if you haven't done that. And meeting documents are next to Commissioner Kelly. And Robert is not here, so Ken will help you. Ken will help you with listening devices if you need any. And with that, we'll go to routine business.
Item one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
Salute.
Second.
Motion, a second, to approve the agenda. Any corrections or changes? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item number two is to approve the county commission minutes of October 22nd, 2013.
Move the minutes.
Second. We have a motion, a second, to approve the commission minutes. Any changes, corrections? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same. Motion unanimously passes.
Item three are bills to be paid in the amount of $425,027.76.
Pay the bills.
Say it.
We have a motion and a second to pay the bills. Any comments?
Mr. Chairman, you know, we have a great diversity of bills. This week includes $16,000 for the medical examiner and $25,000 for one of our volunteer ambulances.
Thank you. Any other comments? Commissioner Kelly?
Ken, could you tell me, on court systems, there's a $10,000 bill. It says MTR of, or maybe you can tell me, Kirsten. What's the MT? It's on page two, the bottom.
Page two of this. I believe that has to do with a child-related abuse and neglect proceeding.
Is that mediator, maybe? Is that?
Um, no. For attorney, I think it's for attorney's fees, the way it appears to me. So.
Good question.
And those are required to be paid by the county based on state statute.
Is this representing a child?
Yes. Or parent. Parents have the right to a court-appointed counsel in those proceedings at county expense, or they're indigent as well, by statute.
Any other questions or comments? If not, we have a motion and a second to pay the bills. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
There are no reports today. Item five is personnel. A is to approve the routine action.
Move routine action.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve routine action. Any questions? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
There are no application for abatement today. The next item are notice and requests. A is to authorize the county auditor to publish a notice to bidders for project MC 121 STR-13, structure and replacements, and grading on county highway 121.
DJ is hustling in.
Good morning, Commissioners. DJ Boothey, Highway Superintendent. This is a request to re-advertise the project that we had advertised and bid and rejected the bids earlier this summer. We redid the time provisions of the contract for construction in 2014, and we hope to get better bids and move forward with the project next year.
Thank you, DJ. Does anyone have any questions?
I want to go on the record, I have no comment. I have no comment. The last time I probably opened my mouth, we had to spend weeks redoing it. Yeah, it's fine.
Mark it on the calendar. Attorney with no comment. Thank you, John. Anybody have any comments? If not, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to re-authorize the publishing of bids. With that, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion unanimously passes without any comment.
There are no planning and zoning notices today. The next item is petition for compromise of lien. John Peckus.
Yeah, thank you. This is on DPNO 81354. The auditor's office received an application to compromise a lien. The individual currently indicates that there's no real estate transaction involved with this request. The county aid lien is in the amount of $927.40. The lien is for both poor relief and for public advocate services provided this last year. The applicant is requesting a discharge to the lien in full with no payment. Apparently, he just received notice from the auditor's office about the lien's existence and currently is unemployed, living on a social security disability. He receives $990 per month in social security, and he has no assets or liability at least listed on his financial statement. He indicated to at least conversations, through conversations with staff, that he has no ability to make any payments due to his limited income. And unfortunately, he did indicate that he could make some small payments over a long period of time, but at this point, he has no means to pay this. And I also noticed that his application was quite light in regards to any sort of information that was provided. In fact, there was a lack of any. So I'm going to make a motion to deny his request.
Second. We have a motion and a second to deny. If the applicant's here, he's not. Okay?
Mr. Chairman, I guess I'd like to make a comment on this.
Absolutely. Commissioner Barth?
You know, here we have a person who lives off the public, who's on, you know, assistance of every kind, who's getting their rent paid by us, who, when they are in trouble for methamphetamines, has their lawyer paid for by us. No assets whatsoever. How did he eat breakfast? What did he have to drink? Where'd he get those cigarettes? I suppose his mother may have given them to him, but this is absurd. This person needs to quit doing drugs and get a job and pay the bills he owes.
Any other comments? Commissioner Peckus?
The term, the legal term is a profligate, and it's actually the cause for getting a divorce. It's very rarely used, pro. I've actually heard Judge Severson look at somebody and say, "You're a profligate," which I thought was, I had to look it up.
I thought you had to be an emperor to be that.
Yeah, exactly.
What does it mean?
It means that you have slovenly behavior.
Commissioner Heiburger?
I'm not going to support it, just because I want to see a better, filled-out financial statement. Every line says none. And Jeff's right. I mean, the person had to. He has a place to live or something. So anyway, I just want to see a complete application before I would approve something like this.
It was rather glib.
Profligate.
Yeah, profligate. Profligacy.
Commissioner?
Well, just a comment. I'm a little concerned. We get more and more of these where there's no real estate transaction involved. Somebody's saying to these people, "Hey, just go to the county and they'll give you 50% or 75% off." And I don't know who's saying that to them, but it concerns me that the one that rates discounted on the public defender, public advocate, that rate is discounted deeply to begin with, I think it's a bad policy that we're using, using that 50% theory.
It's precedent.
But the other thing is, if somebody in the county's saying, "Well, just go to the county and ask." Now, this guy got a bill, so that shows that we are sending bills out. And all of them that come in here and say, "I didn't know I had it," are not telling us the truth. But I just, I'm glad we're denying, or I'm glad we gave the motion to deny this one, because I, there's, when you talk about lawyer costs, I really think that person's got an obligation. I don't care what their situation is.
Any other comments? If not, we have a motion and a second to deny, and I think we'll do a roll call vote, please.
Barth?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Yes.
Kelly?
Aye.
Peckus?
Yes.
Bennigan?
Yes. Motion unanimously passes to deny DPNO 81354. John, do you want to do the next one?
Yeah, sure. This is on DPNO 80501. The auditor's office received an application to compromise a lien submitted by apparently the mother of a individual that actually had charges brought against her, charges brought against him. The applicant is in the process of refinancing her home, and the title company noted the existence of the county aid lien. It's for public defender services on behalf of the applicant's minor child in the amount of $160. The applicant stated that she does not have custody of the minor child and that the attorney representing, the attorney representation stemmed from a charge of assault against the child that was committed against her. So in other words, she was the victim of the assault from her minor child. The child actually was charged. The lien was filed against the child's minor father at the same time. Now, the charge, yeah, the father was also charged. The applicant stated that the minor child was court-ordered to pay attorney's fees as part of the court proceeding. The applicant stated that he should be held accountable for his actions and be solely responsible for paying this lien as part of his court-ordered sentence. The minor child is employed and has the ability to make payments. The minor child lives with his father. In addition, the applicant makes child support payments in the amount of $568 per month to the father. The applicant is requesting a release of the lien in full with no payment. That is listed in her name. She requests the minor child be responsible for the payment as per the court order. And of course, there was once again a financial disclosure that was not completed because of, there was no claim for financial hardship. This is more of, I would say, a question of, I think, a good-natured approach by the Commission regarding this particular situation. In other words, we have a mother that was assaulted by both her minor son and the father in, oh, okay, the, oh, okay, just by the minor son, but the father and mother are, of course, responsible to pay the bill. There is a state statute directly on point that makes a mother and father jointly responsible for the cost of raising their minor child. So state law says she's obligated to pay. The real issue, though, is the fact that the judge ordered that this child be responsible to pay the bill. No, it's, wasn't part of the judgment?
No.
Oh, okay.
On the record, the parents were, I believe, told that both of them were jointly liable for the lien.
Well, that's what the state law says. So in other words, she's stuck.
Unless you do.
Unless we choose to lower the bill. So the only person that would end up losing in this situation would be the county.
Any other comments?
I have a motion.
Is there a motion?
Motion to deny.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to deny. I don't believe the applicant's here either, correct? Let's do a roll call, please.
Commissioner Barth?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Peckus?
Yes.
Bennigan?
Yes. Motion is approved to deny the request. We'll now go into public comment. Anything that's not on the agenda, we would like to have anyone step forward and make a public comment about that. Anyone approaching it doesn't appear, so with that, we'll go directly to regular business.
Item 10 is to authorize the chairman to sign agreements, one each, between Minnehaha County and the City of Sioux Falls, and Minnehaha County and the Sioux Falls School District for the purchase of vote tabulation machines and cost sharing of elections. Bob Letts.
Good morning, Commissioner. Bob Letts from the auditor's office, and I'd like to start out thanking Commissioner Peckus for the word of the day. I frequently leave here with an improved vocabulary. I do appreciate it.
I'll get you the word-of-the-day calendar next week.
As long as it's got a pinup. Good morning, again here. A few months ago, I met with the city and the school officials, and the main purpose that we were doing that day was to decide on 13 locations, and we talked about ADA issues on that. And we went and toured the 13 voting precinct places, or whatever we want to call them here today, for ADA issues and just general practical things like parking, access, doors, where the booths are going to be set up inside the building. Because those, the city and the school want to use those 13 places as common ones for each election. But part of that conversation also centered around the replacement of the 650 vote tabulation machines that we have today. And in conversations with Monty, he seemed to feel that some of the technology was approaching, being dated, and, you know, in another four or five years, would be at the end of its life cycle. So we did, we did contact the purveyor that sold us the 650s, and the new one will be the 850s, and it'll probably be the 850-plus by the time we get around to doing this. But part of the thing was, was we talked, there was, the city clerk's office was there, Jim Enneman from the city council and a few other city officials. We talked about replacing these machines, and the school and the city have each indicated an interest in purchasing one of these machines, and the county purchasing two to replace the four that we have down there. Now, the timeline is out there, 2018. You know, these machines today are looking at over $100,000 if we stay with the brand that we have down there. And I want to know if the Commission is interested in replacing these soon, and if so, I would like, what we've done is got two memorandums of understanding, one from the city and one from the school, that would indicate that they're setting money aside in their budget to replace these machines at the time as appropriate. The action today I'm requesting is that the chair sign both of these documents in agreement for the plan to replace them.
Thank you, Bob. Commissioner Heiburger?
I'm just wondering why we're signing a memorandum of understanding that isn't, that we're not using until 2018.
Well, the school, actually, when they, she's going to set aside $20,000 a year in their budget to build up for it. And the city's budget thing is a little bit different, but it was to accommodate the school's budget, budget desires. We don't need to replace them for a few years, and four years down the road is when we're going to do it.
Sure.
Do they have to have a memorandum of understanding to save money?
Well, you know, I don't know the answer to that. I just thought it would be a good idea for all interested parties to sign a memorandum of understanding, so we're clear in our intent and direction going down the road. That said, there is the standard escape clause of 30 days out from any, in the agreement that we got to give to those other parties, we could, we could get out of the agreement. But I thought it made sense. I hope you think so, too.
Commissioner Kelly?
Well, four years is a light year in technology, and we're kind of committing ourselves right now to, to something in four years. Actually, we're committing a future commission. But how much is, you said the money in the HAVA fund. Will that pay all of it, or will that just pay the county's portion, or?
It'll pay, it'll pay our portion for two machines.
But we're still obligated under this to fulfill the contract in 2018, is that correct?
Yes.
Commissioner Barth?
How many machines do we use? How many do we have? And are there these?
You know, it depends on the size of the election. When the county goes full out on the gubernatorial presidential election, we have all four machines flying down there. We need all four of them. The school and the city, quite frankly, don't need all four of them. And a lot of times, we'll fire up two or three, depending on what the election turnout looks like.
If everybody's done, I just have one question. Bob, I understand why we need the MOU, because frankly, things change, people change, systems change, and if we're going to make a commitment, we have to have an agreement, because somebody along the way might change their mind. But the issue is, do we have enough money in the HAVA funds if, in fact, we're going to do the e-poll books also? And then the other part of that is, has the Secretary of State approved this transaction? Because as we know, there's going to be changes in staff there, too, and there may be a different opinion. Do we need a MOU from the state also?
You know, I'm thinking we would deal with that on down the road here, because, like I say, where the fluctuation that that's in, I'd be glad to go get one from, you know, but who is it at this point? You know, is it, you know, you want me to get a memorandum of understanding with Mr. Gant? I'd be happy to do that and believe that's possible. You know, there's another candidate out there that I believe would be appreciative of this effort, but I can't guarantee anything. I mean, there's, there's an election coming up in that deal, and we don't know about the, you know, there might be somebody come out of the bushes on that and run for Secretary of State.
Well, in my opinion, and I'm not an attorney, so I can get a comment from John, I'm sure. But it seems like if Mr. Gant signs an MOU, he, that's a valid signature for his department in his time of being responsible. So whomever comes forward is going to have to have that same legal responsibility, correct?
And to be clear, looking at the proposed text of the memorandum of understanding, there is a section in there that, I know Commissioner Kelly commented that we might be binding future bodies. As this is a memorandum of understanding, not a contract, there is a clause in there that basically avoids binding a future body. Combine that with the out clauses. I would, I would frame this document as setting out your intent, but not wholly binding you, if that makes sense. It's providing a framework, because Section 9 of the agreement, as I'm looking at, clearly says it's establishing a framework and not totally binding a future body.
Thank you. Appreciate your legal opinion, too.
I like the concept, but the question is, what if, what if this is $130,000 or $40,000 or $60,000 a machine in four years? And maybe what Kirsten just said clarifies that, but, I mean, if they want to put $20,000 a year away, that's smart, and we should probably do the same thing. But I still am reluctant, even though I'd like to see the thing happen, I'm reluctant to get an MOU that might come back to haunt us.
First off, did I answer Commissioner Gerald's question about do we have the money in HAVA funds for e-poll books and that? Yes, I do. There's $675,000 in that, approximately, in that fund today. That could cover the cost of both of them. In four years, yes, the cost could be more than that, but, you know, I guess if we're going to replace those things, I, I don't know what the plan is, and if somebody's got a, you know, something else, a suggestion to do with that, I'd certainly be willing to look at that and help implement it. We're going to have to replace these machines one of these days.
Commissioner?
According to our IT Director, Monty, this timeframe would be something that he would agree to.
Commissioner Peckus?
Well, I was just going to comment that, you know, democracies require elections, and they're messy and they're unfortunate, but the reality is that it's something that we have to pay for, and it's a good process that we have to pay for that, even though it's expensive. So I'm going to support this particular process, but the only part I could say is that, you know, Dave Fieffley at the city and Sue Brunick at the school district put together this memorandum of understanding. Kirsten has looked at it, and if we want to send this to the state, we're really throwing caution to the wind, because remember, lawyers are deal breakers, not dealmakers, and you don't want to have a bunch of lawyers looking at this thing, finding three ways to Sundays why we shouldn't have a memorandum of understanding. I think memorandums of understanding are really efficient, and I remember one time we did a handshake deal with the city regarding ICE out at the fairgrounds, and that came back to bite us, because we didn't do an MOU. So fool me once, shame on you. Fool me twice, shame on me. So let's get an MOU put in place.
Kirsten?
And may I raise something here, and it's something that frankly, I didn't notice until now. The phrasing of the memorandum of understanding with the city contains those provisions that I just talked about before. However, now that I look at the one with the school district, I don't believe that language is in there. I hate to do this, but I'd probably recommend that that language be put in there as well about the non-binding nature. And so at this point, I would probably ask that we edit. I guess that would be my legal advice, is to edit the agreement with the district to reflect the same language as contained in the city one. I apologize, I did not see that until just now. The school district agreement is more like an agreement rather than a memorandum of understanding, I guess, at this point, and I apologize for that, but.
I'll go ahead, and I'll make the motion to amend the school district agreement to be consistent with the city agreement in the attempt to make it more of a memorandum of understanding.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Cindy, do you want to restate that for us, please?
Hope I have it right. The motion is to amend the agreement with the school district to reflect the same language as in the city agreement and authorize the chairman to sign both agreements, once amended. Is that correct?
Yeah, close enough.
A lawyer said?
I believe you said.
Is that one of those pro-whatever things?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Bob?
Commissioner, I'm a little uneasy, I guess, with us unilaterally changing the language without going back. I, uh...
It'll just go back to the school district, and then they'll have to talk to the board, and the board will probably make a motion to amend it to make it consistent with the city's. It'll be done next week. Just a hunch.
May I ask?
Absolutely.
Question. Is it your understanding that the school district has considered it as written at this point?
Yes, Jeff sent it to me.
Okay. But what, I guess what I'm asking is, have they given it approval as a body?
Well, I think she sent it to us to get it signed, so.
Okay.
That's whether, whether they, you know, it was generated by there, whether the board had something to do with it, or her and Todd did it, or another person.
Okay. I guess my perspective on that is, if you approve that language going forward, they would have the opportunity to consider it at this point. It's just the language in the agreement as it's termed to the school district one. I just want to make sure that it's consistent as a memorandum of understanding in that point, rather than a binding contract in light of it being out for a while.
Is that what the motion states?
Yes, I believe it does.
Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, I, this is just to amend it, right? Or is this to, for final passage as well?
No, just to amend.
This is just to amend. Okay. I have some more concerns, I guess, but I'm happy to admit, make this amendment.
Okay. If I might, I still have, do you have any concerns about not getting approval from the Secretary of State?
I do not.
But what if they changed their mind?
The Secretary of State's office?
Yeah.
That's not their money to change their mind about.
So then why do we even have to ask them for the money?
Well, I don't know. I guess it's just kept in a fund out there, and then we just get release of the money from that fund that the HAVA funds are in.
So we don't need their approval?
I believe we'd be, we'd be getting some sort of approval to get it out of there, but I don't, I just don't see why they would not do it.
Okay. Ken, have we ever done this before without, I mean, do we?
Turn this back.
I just want to make sure we don't get stuck with somebody's bill, which is basically the school district's and the city's bill.
And I think that's what Bob was trying to indicate, is that with the MOUs, they have agreed to do a cost share for those funds, and that, you know, thinking back on the last time we accessed the HAVA funds, I think that's how we purchased these machines to begin with, and that the ones that we have, and I do not recall that we had a separate agreement with the Secretary of State for that purpose.
Okay.
I'd like to point out, too, that when the original machines were bought, the county booted the whole bill for all four machines.
Hmm.
And that was paid out of HAVA funds.
Any other questions or comments?
On the amendment?
We have the amended wording, wording on the agreement. Does anybody else want to hear that again?
I want to follow up on Jeff's question. Are we voting on the MOU?
We're moti-
As amended? Or, I mean, as?
As amended, yes.
You were voting on the amendment to the MOU.
Yep. Not, but not the approval of it, as I understand.
Right, that's right.
Okay. I just want to make sure.
You guys are making this more difficult than it has to be.
It's because we've got lawyers here.
And I don't have a second to that.
I didn't think so.
Okay.
We have a motion.
A second.
But no second. Now we have a second. Anybody have any questions about the amendment? If not, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote again.
Commissioner Barth?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Pecas?
Yes.
Benega?
Yes. We approved the amended MOU, now we need approval for the contract.
Mr. Chairman?
And what you...
So here's my question. We've got the money to buy our share of this already. Why don't we just do it? Why do we need them to agree so that we're then, that, you know, is this going to twist their arm into buying some additional machines, or?
I think if they're signing a contract, we're not twisting their arm. It's their contract.
May I, Mr. Chair?
Commissioner?
My understanding is that, Jeff, when we had this the last time, we paid for all four machines, and I think Bob came to us at least at budget time and indicated that there may have been an opportunity, because of the cost of doing the elections for both the school district and the city, that with their involvement in that process and the fact that we bear all the burden of conducting all the elections, that it may be incumbent on our part to see if they would be willing to help fund some of the infrastructure related to doing those elections. And I know they actually pay for their own election cycle and their own, they pick their own places where they have their own elections, but at this point, this is somewhat of a first to actually have the city and the school district be willing to come forward and help us defray the cost of what we have as our infrastructure to help pay for those elections. So, yeah, it is kind of, it's not twisting their arms, but, you know, it's one of those opportunities where they're willing to at least help us in the cost of doing some of those elections. And by the way, statutorily, they don't have to. We bear the cost, 100 percent. We have to.
I would tell you this, too, that both of the election officials from those entities believe this is in their best interest.
Yeah.
I'd like to point out, Mr. Wattenbach, my tea is here, I didn't know the money...
Yeah, we'll get to him in a second. Commissioner Kelly? If we're constitutionally required to do elections, is that correct?
Statutorily.
Do we then bill the city for, like, the use of these things, or anything like that?
No. We go for our services going up to election day, and then on election day, it's been the opinion of other entities, that on election day, that we bear the cost of manning those elections. I've run that question by Mr. Katmeyer, and he feels differently. So, and with Gerald, Mr. Benning's comments at budget time earlier this year, that's going to be something we revisit, and I just thought it prudent to do this first before I ask them for more money for conducting elections.
Well, then the question is, if in April there's an election to determine whether or not Walmart's going to go on a Lincoln County property, are we going to pay for that election?
Well, we pay for both of it. It's the city's election, but we conduct the absentee voting in it, and the election day service is accounting the balance. And there may be a couple of other oddball things, such as programming the 650 machines down there. We program the auto marks, those are some things that we will be able to do if they want.
Other questions? If not, Monty, would you like to make any comments?
Sure.
Good morning, Commissioner Monty Wattenbach, Information Technology Director. You know, I guess I don't know exactly what the agenda item was today regarding the electronic poll books, but...
No, no. The 650, the application...
Okay. And...
The request is, let the school buy one, city buy one.
Okay, and what's the timeframe on doing this?
2018.
2018 is the completion.
Okay. Yeah, I think, you know, as I've looked at those products, you know, they're aged, you know, and that technology keeps evolving. The electronics and technology inside of them keeps evolving, so the newer equipment is a lot more advanced than the current ones that they have. So there is that need, you know, and I think you can't put off replacing them for forever. So a plan to get them replaced is a good idea, and if 2018 is the targeted year, I'll let that be up to the auditor's office, but you do need to have a plan. Absolutely.
Thank you. Any questions for Monty? The other opinion that I have gotten is, it doesn't make sense to wait till we get the school district and the cities' signed contracts before we approve the final agreement? I think there's a good reason to do that. If they decide they don't want to do it the way we've suggested, then we're back on square one.
I'll make a motion to defer until we get back the signed copies from the school district and the city, with the school district agreement being amended to be consistent with the language in the city memorandum of understanding.
I'll second that. Okay, we have a motion and a second to defer until we get the signatures of the city and the school district. Commissioner, Mr. Litz?
That makes a lot of sense to me, and I would request that Mr. Katmeyer help me with these changes.
Okay. Thank you for your opinion. We have a motion and a second to defer until we get the city and the school district's signatures with the corrected language. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes. Thanks, Bob.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say one more thing.
Sure.
I think this was a good idea, Bob. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll work towards getting it done.
Good.
Item number 11 is to consider motions to approve actions associated with the Minnehaw County tax deed properties. Bob Litz.
Good morning, Bob Litz, again. I'm hoping this next item won't be quite as controversial, but after a short conversation with Mr. McFarland, I'm not so sure when I'm heading down that road again.
We've got news for you, it is controversial.
Okay. All right, well, then, you know, I'm going to run through the whole thing here, but I think I know which way we're going to take here. But the Surplus Property Appraisal Board for Minnehaw County has completed their tour of the tax deed properties. There were four parcels that were physically inspected by the board. The recommendations of the board are as follows. RDID 75672 and 75673 be given to the adjacent property owners that has abandoned drainage looking for a home. The property owners don't want it. We've also contacted the city of Brandon for drainage, and they didn't tell me no at this point. I was reluctant to pursue it without, you know, your permission. RDID 42268 be donated to community development for entry-level residential infill housing. And it looks like the lady from CCOG, Lynn Keller Forbes, is very interested in this lot. We had conversations earlier this year about that, and that may be the direction we're taking. She's interested. RDID 29189 be sold at auction. We've had some interest in this property and believe it will be active on the sale. It's a home that needs some help, but it's quite livable. It's over off of Eighth Street, kind of by where the old Lincoln Elementary School is, and I've had a lot of people contact me on that because they know it's on the list. The appraisal board, now here's where we run into the rub. The appraisal board also discussed some properties that were too numerous and small to visit in a practical manner. The recommendation is to give to the city of Sioux Falls the following 11 properties, and they're on record unless you want me to read through all the RDIDs. These properties are all drainage areas and are not suited for development. And the last thing on here would be RDID 82484. It's an eight-foot by eight-foot landlocked plot in a backyard. It is recommended to be given to the adjacent property owner. The actions that I'm requesting today are, number one, to accept the report of the Surplus Property Appraisal Board; number two, declare RDID 29189 surplus for the sale of auction, and the minimum bid be set at $15,000. Third, to approve all other tax deed properties to be disposed of as recommended by the appraisal board; and number four, to authorize the auditor to publish a notice of tax deed sale to be held on Saturday, November 23rd at 10:00 a.m.
Okay, so you are going to take item E off the agenda? That's the one that we do not have an appraisal board sign off on, that we are questioning.
Yes, why don't, yes, the 11 properties that go to the city of Sioux Falls in the eight-by-eight lot. I'd like to pull those off and go back. And here's what happened, folks, is we went and visited the four lots that looked like they were going on the sale. We sat down in the cafeteria down there, and we looked at the plot plans and everything, and some of these are just little slivers of land. They're nine inches wide, or, you know, they're 100 feet long, and they're six feet wide. They're just strange little pieces of property, and they looked at those and decided that, you know, was it worth our going out there to look at them? They said no, and they wanted to do that. If I have to do some more work to make this, get your approval, we'll certainly do that. But it was recommended at the coffee table to do that with those properties.
Well, I think from my perspective is that we do need to have it signed off on, and there is no sign off on this report, whether they looked at plots or went out and did visuals. One of them's got a tax amount owing at $27,000, so I want to make sure that we do this correctly.
One of them has probably a $1.5 million worth of...
I understand.
...federal tax things and liens and all sorts of stuff, and it's a 45-degree hill going down. It's an impossible situation. They did stop and look at that, because of the size of the lot on paper, it looks pretty good, and when you get to the situation, it doesn't look pretty at all. So, well, then I would ask that the four properties that actually were signed off on by the appraisal board, and that had a little bit to do with my mistake. We went in the cafeteria, and then I let them go before we talked to Cindy. Cindy would have kept them there and had them sign off on the whole thing, but they were anxious to get going that day. I let them sign on the four and didn't have their other ones prepared, so it's my bad. I'll work towards getting that corrected, but I would like approval of the four that they did go, you know, and physically inspect. I'd like the permission to declare them a surplus.
Commissioner Pecas?
I'll make the motion.
I think we need to do this per item, don't we?
Okay.
I don't think we can do it all together.
I have a question first, if you want.
Commissioner Kelly?
What? Clear me up. You said one of them has a $1 million judgment, I guess?
Over a million dollars, and $50,000, that's a federal tax lien. It's got, there was a guy that went broke with his tire company, and he was trying to build a house on there for years. The neighbor stopped him from doing it. He went out and rubbed the property. He got sued.
Slow down, slow down.
It's an encumbered piece of property that is basically unbuildable. The city would like it for drainage.
Which property, which property is that?
It would have been, it would have been out on Madison Avenue just before the Cactus Heights turn off, and I'm not sure what the RDID of that is.
Right now, it's not Minnehaw County's property, correct?
Yes, it is.
It is?
Yes.
Other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I guess I'm just wondering which property it is, like Dick asked.
Well, that's a great question, because I'm just looking at the schedule, and I don't see that one.
I don't either.
I'm not seeing it on here as well.
I think...
But that property would have been one of those that we're going to give to the city of Sioux Falls, so I'd like to pull that off of there.
I think, Mr. Litz, you're going to have to go back and look at the schedule.
Okay.
Because I don't see, anybody see it? Am I, okay. Well, let's do it item by item. We need to go, first of all, with item A to accept the report of the Surplus Property Appraisal Board, and that does not include the ones that we have in item E. That's only the four that have been identified with the RDID numbers, correct?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to approve the report from the Surplus Property Appraisal Board for the four items that they signed off on. Anybody have any questions?
You keep referring to item E. I don't...
Item E on your agenda?
Oh, on the agenda, okay.
Yeah, that's what we're doing today.
Well, I know, I'm working on a computer.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Just want to make a comment.
Yes, please.
You know, I'm on the, I've been on this commission for a while, and I, when developers come to us and they want to plat out their development, they regularly put drainage things in the no-man's land where no one is responsible for it. And I really object to that, because this is what happens. We wind up with, some years later, no one has ever paid the tax on those properties, and they revert to us. We have to seize them. I think that any time we plant out these subdivisions, we need to be extremely reluctant to put in drainage areas and leave them basically without an owner. You know, if it means that you own an extra 50 feet on the back of your lot, that's the way it ought to be. But we see this over and over and over again, and even with some of the new subdivisions coming in, I've kind of resisted it a little bit, but this, we shouldn't be learning this lesson over and over.
But these are in the city. We don't have anything to say about them anyway, unfortunately.
That's very true.
I mean, the one up by Renner where there was a drainage issue, I think we addressed with responsibility, but...
And Dick's correct, the one that you're talking about that's a million plus, I mean, that's a city-owned issue. It was approved by the city, not by the county.
That works out well for the developer, by the way.
Yeah, not on this one, it didn't. Again, we're back to item A to accept the report of the Surplus Property Appraisal Board on those four RDID numbers. And we have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Okay, motion unanimously passes. John, did I cut you off?
Well, yeah, I just wanted to kick that dead horse a little bit. Jeff's absolutely right when it comes to the fact that, you know, we should be upset with the fact that that property sitting out there was presented by a developer, and then we're stuck with this particular parcel of land, or we're not generating funds for it, because this is the only body by statute that has the responsibility and legal obligation to collect every property tax dollar that's out there. And that's not just for the city, it's for the county, and most importantly, the school district. And 70 cents of that property tax dollar goes to that school district. So when a developer comes in and creates a particular parcel of land that basically is non-taxable, that's affecting the school district, the kids, and I have a problem with that. But once again, I've talked about that before, but, you know, I just wanted to echo with what Commissioner Barth was talking about.
My apologies for cutting you off.
No, not at all.
I wasn't sure if you had a question or not. Cindy, do you want to read item B then?
Item B is to declare RDID 29189 as surplus for sale at public auction with a minimum bid of $15,000.
Thank you. Any questions of Bob?
Make that motion.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to declare 29189 a surplus. Commissioner Heiburger?
I just wondered why the minimum bid was $15,000 when the assessed value is $67,000.
Well, you know, Commissioner Heiburger, on the two auctions that I've done, we've started out high, and then it dropped way down, and then we started building back up. So they want to see how low you're going to go. I'm going to start it out at 15 and stay there. It's a house, this is a very marketable property, and I believe we're going to go on up from there, probably going to get into 30s. As I said, there seems to be some issues with the property that when somebody inspects it, it's going to cost them some money to fix it. I would look for this thing to go in the $30,000, $40,000 range, hopefully.
Do you expect more than one bidder?
Yes.
Okay. I don't worry so much about the minimum as I do about the number of bids. If you only got one person who shows up with a special interest, you may have a problem with their value.
Well, Cindy maintains a list of folks that are interested in these properties, and so we'll be mailing that out if she's not done so already.
150, some people.
Wow.
Doesn't mean that they're going to bid, though, just because they called.
That's true, that's true. You know, so we passed the one house to get sold here, but there was three other parcels out there.
We haven't done that yet.
Okay.
You're jumping, I'm losing complete control. Okay, we have a motion and a second to declare RDID 29189 a surplus. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes. Now we're on item C.
Item C is to declare RDID 75672 and 75673 as surplus and authorize the transfer to adjacent property owners.
Bob, do you have any comments on that?
You know, on paper, those lots look like they might be worth something, so I took a drive out there to see what's going on, and it's one of these cases that the plot plan should have never been run through the city. It just didn't make any sense to do it like this. There should have been two backyards butted up to each other instead of a half a backyard butted up to a livable lot. I had conversations with the people in the, in one of the houses, they're both a retired couple, and the one next door is another retired couple. The ditch, the lots lend themselves to drainage. There was actually a steep ditch you're going down in there, and there's plum thickets. I ripped my coat going through the thing. They've been maintaining it, mowing around there, and I did knock on the door, and I talked to the one couple. And like I said, they're retired, both of them. One of them is actually Mark Peterson. He was served on the planning board for many years and was part of Sioux Falls construction. They have no interest in that property because of the situation that they're in in retirement. So I did talk to them about it. They're not, like I said, they're not interested. The city of Brandon's engineering department, I thought I talked to them, I think it's one guy, and see if they're going to take it. And Brian Reed, I had a conversation with him. He says, well, if you get that permission to do that, we'll take it up from there, so... So, otherwise, I don't know what I'm gonna do with these lots.
Mr. Cho, is it going to- Just a second, Dick. Commissioner Barth-
Aren't these two, aren't these two to give to the adjacent property owner, but if they don't want it, or is that what we're going to?
No.
It's not these two?
No, you're right. Cindy just gave me the property board report, and it's not to sell, or it's just to transfer the title and give it to the adjacent property owner.
Who doesn't want it?
Well, the other adjacent property owner is the city of Brandon.
Okay. It doesn't say that, and so-
Thank you. Commissioner-
So who are we giving it to?
City of Brandon.
The guy, not the guy that doesn't want it?
Yeah.
No, good point.
Nettle has taken-
Unfortunately, we don't have this. It's on Dropbox, yeah, but it's not on the sheet. It is to the city of Brandon in both cases.
Yes.
And it's less than $500 in appraised board value?
If they'll take it.
If they'll take it.
I'll make a motion to transfer it to Brandon if they'll take it. Second.
A motion and a second to declare it surplus and transfer it to the city of Brandon. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes. I think we're now to, is it F? No, I'm sorry, D.
Declare RDID 42248 as surplus and authorize the transfer to Sioux Falls Community Development.
Make a motion to approve.
Say it.
Bob, do you have any comments on that one?
It's a big, long infill lot. It's got some legal problems with it. Community development, it might come, go to community development, but Lynn Keller Forbes has some ideas about what to do with that lot.
Okay, thank you.
It's in an older neighborhood. The neighborhood for, on each side of the street is modest, but it looks like it's well-kept, and I think a new starter home in there would be a suitable arrangement.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to declare RDID 42248 as surplus and transfer it to the Sioux Falls Community Development.
Mr. Chairman, on the, on Dropbox, it looks like it's 42268.
That's what I have.
Well, the agenda says 48, so we need to change that to 68.
42268.
Move to amend to change the number to 42268.
Say it.
We have a motion to amend and declare RDID 42268 as surplus and authorize the transfer. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes, four to one. Now we need to approve the amended motion, correct?
Correct.
You looked at me like I was crazy, Jeff.
No, I wasn't looking, I was looking at Dick.
Oh, okay. We need a motion to approve the amended motion.
Make a motion to approve the amended motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any other comments? If not, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes, four to one. Thank you. Last item is item F. The authorize the county auditor to publish the notice of tax deed sale as of November 23rd.
Move to publish.
Second.
A motion and a second to publish the tax deed sale. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank God we got through that. Item 12.
I'll make a motion to defer E.
Oh, yeah, we didn't do that. Thank you, John.
Second motion to defer E.
Jeez, we didn't get through it. We should never let two attorneys sit next to each other.
If he kicks me hard enough, I wake up.
We have a motion to defer item E until we get appraisal board sign-off on the report. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes. Thank you, Kirsten and John. Now we're at item 12.
Item 12, consider approval of an amendment to the Construction Administration Services contract with Infrastructure Design Group in the amount of $11,125 for the replacement of bridge structures 50-240-085 and 50-240-095. Shannon Schultz.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Shannon Schultz, Senior Project Engineer for the Highway Department. The item before you is specifically regarding the professional service for Construction Administration on the two structures that you just approved to be advertised for letting.
Any questions? Commissioner Kelly?
So we're paying $11,000 to change the date.
That's not exactly true. There was a change in the traffic control plans, because at the time this bridge was going to be built, there was an immediate project north of this project, which is already built, but this was going to tag team right behind it, so that traffic control could have stood in place. In addition, Baltic Bridge was not open, and so we had permanent traffic control associated with that. And so, these plans had to be revised to accommodate the changes to traffic control. In addition, there was some additional complications with the Corps of Engineers permit, and some stipulations regarding fall construction versus spring construction had to be included into the plans. And for those reasons, the plans had to be changed, which is built into this additional CD cost. In addition to, we've expanded the amount of time to allow the contractor to build this job, because if you compress time, construction costs go up. So we're gonna give them a little more time, and so our construction observation professionals have to adjust their contract time to accommodate additional time in the field performing those observations.
Thank you, Shannon. Any other questions? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Construction Administration Service Contract with Infrastructure Design Group. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes. Thank you.
Item number 13 is consider approval of revisions to policy number 12.1, health assessment of juveniles in the Minnehaha County Regional Juvenile Detention Center Policy Manual.
Morning, Todd.
Morning, Commissioners. Todd Cheever from the JDC. This revision will help us have outside physicals counted.
You're gonna have to turn it up a little, or we get the microphone closer, I can't hear you.
This revision will help us include outside physicals, that will count towards the physicals that we're gonna need to do at the JDC.
This is the same thing we talked about, was it last week or the week before?
Correct, it's just revision.
Okay, good. Dick, did you have a question?
Nope.
Okay. Any questions for Todd? Commissioner Heiberg?
When did the medical part go into effect?
All but the physical's going to affect November 1st.
Okay.
Any other questions? If not, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the revisions to the policy for health assessment of juveniles. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes. Thank you, Todd.
Item 14 is to authorize the chairman to sign labor agreement between Minnehaha County and Local 2561, Council 59 of the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees. Ken McFarland.
Morning, Commissioners. And as you know, we have a labor union contract with the highway union that expires on December 23rd of 2013, and that we've been in negotiations with the union for a few months, and that earlier this year, and we've actually reached tentative agreement on the, on the contract a few months ago. However, the contract's been setting up with the union, and that as they've just gone over the contract documents to, just to make sure that all the provisions were what they wanted them to be. I have received notification that the union has indeed voted on the contract that you have before you, and has approved the contract. And that the main points of the agreement, we were able to negotiate a three-year agreement, so this will begin December 21st, 2013, through the last payroll period in December of 2016. And that as far as wages go, they are guaranteed a minimum of a 1% increase in salary, or that approved by the county commission for non-union employees, whichever is greater for the 2014 contract year only. There is no guaranteed increase for 2015 or 2016, and that's because, as you know, we've agreed to complete a wage study by May 1 of 2014, and we have agreed that we can reopen this contract for wage purposes only for the 2015 and 2016 contract years. And of course, the membership will receive a step increase in 2014. As far as holidays go, we did negotiate an elimination of the President's Day holiday that happens in February, in favor of adding the day after Thanksgiving as the recognized holiday. And that there were some minor changes to what was allowed in the clothing allowance, and we did bump the clothing allowance to $400. And of course, what we did is to facilitate the highway superintendent's desire to reorganize the department based on job descriptions that were better defining the actual job duties and teams that he has set up. Those job descriptions were reworked and were made part of the contract as well as Appendix B. So what we're asking today is for authorization for the chairman to sign the, the contract, and once signed, the highway union rep will be being to sign it as well.
Does anyone have any questions for Ken?
Mr. Chairman, I guess I would make a motion to authorize you to sign the contract, and then I would have a comment if we go forward.
Is there a second to?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Barth?
Well, I just think that it's very commendable that both sides were able to negotiate and up with an agreement well ahead of any kind of countdown to a deadline. That shows good faith on both sides. And Ken, who worked on the contract from the county side?
On the county side, the representatives were myself, Carrie Dever, and DJ Boothie.
Well, my thanks to all of you.
Very much approved, that's for sure. Any other comments?
If not- I just would like to thank also the highway union themselves. They conducted themselves in a very, very professional manner, and that we had some good tussles back and forth, but I agree that I think we negotiated a fair and good contract in the process.
Very good. We have a motion and a second to approve the union contract with Local 2561 of the Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees. Those in-
One other, just, I wish the last two remarks regarding the panel from Jeff and Ken's remarks on the contract be part of the minutes.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, again, to sign the labor agreement. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes. Ken, thank you for every work.
The next item is Minnehaha County Commissioner Liaison Reports.
Does anyone have any liaison reports?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Barth?
I'm not liaisoned to the Glory House, but I did briefly attend their 45th anniversary event last week, and they are credit to our community and an asset to this county. I wish we could support them at a, at a better level than we do. They are exactly the kind of thing that will help us going forward with Senate Bill 70, and if we ever get to the point where we do, as Commissioner Kelly has suggested, where we have a conference on crime in our community, I think they, they would be someone that we should invite.
Absolutely. Any other liaison reports? If not, is there any new business? Commissioner McFarland?
Please don't say that.
Is that an insult?
No, it is not. I have two things that I want to put on your radar screen. Number one, we're already starting to get questions about it. As you know, the county takes, we get a half-day off as a recognized holiday on Christmas Eve, so we'll be closed at noon. And Christmas Eve this year does happen to fall on Tuesday, which is a commission meeting day. Now, as we get close to year end, there are some things that we're gonna have to take care of and have you folks approve or act upon, and that as we get closer to year end. And so, what I'm asking is, is it your desire to go ahead and have a meeting that day? We will, of course, be open, and we will, of course, keep the agenda really small and only to those items that would be absolutely necessary. I do tell you, I do need to tell you, we will absolutely have to have a commission meeting on New Year's Eve, on the 31st. I mean, there's a number of actions that we'll have to take to clear out the books and, you know, the balance books at year end, and we'll do the pre-regulative notice of hearings on those budgetary items, but we do have to meet on the 31st. But it is optional on Christmas Eve, though I do, you know, we may, you may want to keep it open simply because there may be some items that we'll have to take care of at that point, and we'll do everything we can to keep it a really short meeting. And I only need three of you.
Thanks, Ken. Commissioner Kelly?
Well, Ken, I guess I, I don't think we should have a meeting that day. Ken, I would guess we could handle any issues that would handle on that day, either on the 20, on the 31st.
31st, we have-
Or the week before, if everybody's aware right now that what our plans are. My guess, my vote would be to not have a meeting on the 25th, 4th.
Anybody else have any comments? I do have a comment, I guess, but I'll wait for your input.
Mr. Chairman, I expect to be available on both days, and Christmas Eve, we're conveniently close to come and go where I do my shopping.
Did you quit the dollar store?
My only comment about, I guess, response to Ken's and Dick's comments is that, I guess my gut feeling from my personal standpoint is the fact that if the employees have to be here on the 24th, we ought to be here also. I don't see why we should be an exception to someone else's responsibilities. So whether, the only clue, or the only hassle that we might have is if we know ahead of time that there's reasons for us not to have a majority, but I always felt that if we ask the staff to be here, we need to be here. So, sorry, Dick, I don't agree.
I'll be here, I can be here on the 24th, but when it comes to the 31st, I may or may not be here. It all depends on if I have federal court or not, so.
Okay. Any other comments? Do you need an official action?
Not today, but it is something I will need, you know, you folks to give some direction on fairly soon, whether or not we are going to meet that day. I just wanted to put it on your radar screen.
Well, for people who are planning, I guess, I'd like to have at least an indication if you think we're gonna be, you're gonna be here for both days.
I plan to be here.
Jeff will be shopping, but that's okay. Mr. Heiberg?
I plan to be here.
I'll be here the 24th, for sure.
Dick?
I'll be here.
Sorry, Dick.
I will be here for both also. So I think we're open for business.
Thank you.
Yep.
I only have one other item, and I did lay this on your desk, and I'm sorry for the short notice of it, but I just received it yesterday, and I want to caution you that I'm not asking for a commitment today beyond your willingness to participate in the process. We've received a request from Sioux Falls Community Foundation that they are getting ready to conduct their, their new session. Many of you might remember when the last time we did this, it was called Sioux Falls Tomorrow 2, while they're getting ready to embark on a new visioning process. I don't know if they'll call it Sioux Falls Tomorrow 3, or Sioux Falls Tomorrow 2014. That is still under consideration. But the last time they went through this process, Minnehaha County was the sponsor of the event, and that both for participating and financially. Back in, at that time, you had authorized the expenditure of $2,000 to participate and be a sponsor for the program to help, you know, in the, any rentals or provision of beverages or food, you know, during the, during the process because of the hours involved with it. The Community Foundation is once again interested in having us be a sponsor. They are asking that, they're gonna be approaching Sioux Falls City, the Sioux Falls School District, the Chamber of Commerce, the Lincoln County Commission as well, to be, and the city of Sioux Falls, to be sponsors of the event, and they're asking for a $5,000 commitment at this time from each of those entities. Now, I don't need any kind of a commitment from you right now as part of, financially, but- but the request that they've made is, are you, they are getting ready to print some promotional material regarding this, and that we're just trying to gain your interest in being, quote, "a sponsor," at whatever level that may end up being, but your, your desire to be a sponsor in this particular endeavor, like you were back in 2004. So that's what I bring it to you, just to get it as well on your radar screen.
Mr. Kelly?
I know they're pretty well along in the planning stages on this, and I think they're really wanting to get going sooner rather than later. In fact, this year, I believe.
Their letter indicates that they'd actually start the process, the session's beginning in January. But they are, again, they're preparing material right now, and that's the sense of the urgency of whether or not we go or not.
I think this, Andrew Patterson is going to be on loan from the community foundation, but I would, I would encourage us to consider this next week. That gives any a chance to ask questions or look at the 2004. I frankly think it's a very important item and gives, gives us some direction as to where this community wants to go for the next ten, twenty, thirty years. So I don't know, I would request it be put on the agenda next week.
Any other comments? If not, I'd suggest, Ken, that you come back with suggestions on where the, the money would come from out of the 2014 budget.
I will tell you right now that it will require a general fund supplement from the, you know, to a budget, because right now, I cannot envision anywhere right now where that is sufficient funds in anybody's budget right now to conduct that. So it will require a supplemental action down the line, it just will. I certainly don't have any in the commission office budgets that's there in there, and I, I just don't believe there's another appropriate budget somewhere to facilitate that transfer of funds. So it will need to be a supplement.
We all benefit from the fact that this is long-range planning for the community, and I think-
And they do-
If we get some of the benefits, we should have some of the responsibility.
And they are going to request that as one of the sponsors that, and stakeholders that we, they're asking for one of you folks to be involved in that process as well.
Good. Any other old business? I guess the only comment that I'd like to make is I think all of us today got a copy of a letter Ryan Thornell sent to all of us and to Ken about his support, if you will, that he provided to us for the Juvenile Detention Center consulting contract. Unfortunately, he has a job offer in Maine, and he's moving in January to Maine to become the executive director of the Department of Corrections there. And our city and community and state have lost a very strong person in leading us through some of the things that we're facing in public safety issues, and I certainly wish him well and hope he does well, but it's kind of tough to see good people leave. Any other comments? If not, we do need to go into exec session for a personnel item.
So, second.
We have a motion and a second to go into, to exec session for personnel. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. We'll be back here in five minutes. Dick?